Madam Mayor, counting down. Five, four, three, two, and one.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the City Council meeting of May 2nd, 2024. I'm calling this meeting to order at 7:32 PM. Which brings us to roll call, and there are no requests under Roll Call Item A. City Clerk, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Cunningham.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Lenz.
Here.
Councilmember Mackin.
Here.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Here. Thank you. And please join me for the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can we get a report out on closed session, please, from the city attorney?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The City Council met in closed session. They took up a claim and denied the claim. That will be properly communicated after the meeting. The council also gave the city attorney guidance on a threatened litigation matter. So we'll move forward with that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. With that, we'll move over ahead with the adoption of the agenda. I'd like to move Item D ahead of awards and presentations. And with that, can I get a first and a second to approve the agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And that will move us to Item D, which is... The Youth Advisory Committee is going to give us a presentation. Welcome to come up to the podium. And welcome, you are Nicole Houghton, the Park and Recreation Supervisor. Welcome.
Yes, excellent. Thank you so much. Just a brief introduction, and then I'll hand it over to our wonderful Youth Advisory Committee. So, good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. My name is Nicole Houghton. I'm a Recreation Supervisor here with the City of Brisbane. It is my pleasure tonight to present to you the 2023-2024 Brisbane Youth Advisory Committee, otherwise referred to as the YAC. YAC members have the important duty of advising the Parks and Recreation Commission and the recreation staff on the programs and issues that concern the youth and teens in the Brisbane community. This volunteer group is a great way to get involved in the community and make a difference. You'll hear from our speakers tonight about all of the wonderful work that they have been a part of this year, often volunteering their time after busy school days, scheduling around extracurricular activities, and giving their time to serve. Youth committees like this are not unique to Brisbane. In fact, our teens get the opportunity, which you'll hear more about shortly, to engage with youth committees and commissions throughout the state of California. This year, we have six graduating seniors on the committee, including our very own YAC president and Youth Volunteer of the Year, Saagar Rajan. While these seniors are wrapping up their high school careers, they are also making important decisions about their future and collegiate commitments for the fall. You will notice that Saagar is joining us via Zoom this evening since he has been afforded an opportunity to make a special visit to a Southern California campus today. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce our speakers representing the YAC tonight, and I'll have them come up and introduce themselves. Thank you so much.
Okay. Hi, my name is Charlotte. I'm a junior, and this is my s- oh, and I've been on YAC for two years.
Hello, everyone. I'm Sebastian. I'm in 10th grade. I've been serving on YAC for three years.
Hello, my name is Sasha. I'm a 12th grader, and I've been on YAC for four years.
Hi, I'm Avni Rajan. I'm a 9th grader, and I've been on YAC for three years.
Hi, my name is Alarian. I'm a senior, and I've been on YAC for three years.
Hi, everyone. My name is Saagar. I'm a senior as well, and I've been on YAC for six years.
Oh, are we going back to the slideshow? Okay, so I'll start by introducing. So what I'm going to do is talk a little bit about more what the YAC is and what it means to be a part of the YAC. So if we could go to the next slide. Okay, so the YAC is split into two sections. There's the executive section and the associate section. So the executives are the high schoolers, like the people who just came up. It's people who have maybe a little bit more time or capabilities to spend more time volunteering or become a little bit more involved. And then the associate boards is for the middle schoolers who want to be a part of the YAC but maybe don't have those same like capabilities or aren't ready yet to be a full YAC member. They have the opportunity to kind of observe what's going on through the associate board. And so the goal of the entire committee is to serve, again, like what it says on the thing, serve the Brisbane community by offering guidance and suggestions. So essentially just providing the youth perspective towards local government. And what this does is it lets all of us like be like here today, and I think they'll all agree with me, to like gain like really cool civic engagement opportunities, like even being able to go to a city council meeting like this. I'm sure a lot of our peers wouldn't otherwise have the chance to do that or like the opportunity to. And so it's really cool and really, I think, interesting, especially in like today's world, to be that like in close proximity with local government and to be able to have our voice be heard in that way. And so on that note, our current initiative for the 2023 to 2024 school year is improving Brisbane. So whether that be through improving the communities of all ages through Senior Tech or through the resume workshop that we worked on or just like the Houdini General through Howell Owen, it's like improving the Brisbane community one event at a time. And so here is a look, with that, with that like lens in mind, here's a look at our most recent year together, starting with this fall.
Hello, everybody. It's good to see you guys. So we got involved with a bunch of different things this fall, the first one being the Garden Show. And before I speak about that, we want to thank Councilmember Davis and also Lisa Greenlee for, you know, putting in a lot of work for that event and making it possible. It was a really great opportunity for us to get involved and get involved with the community and, you know, collaborate on ideas like environmentalism and staying green and growth, community, like things of that nature. And what we did specifically, we helped set up chairs, we made sure that everybody that was participating had the things that they needed. And at the end, we even got the opportunity to do some judging. So we got to taste some wonderful jams that one of the contestants made, and they were very tasty. And then we also got to look at some beautiful plants and flowers. And then another thing that we got involved in that is probably no news to you is Dana Park, Brisbane staple. I've been going there ever since I was very little. And this year, I especially got to see all the hard work that got put into the event. I was actually staying after and lifting all the hay bales from the Derby back onto the truck. So I came back with as much as blisters and scratches, and I really got to see that, you know, all the hard work that a lot of community members and workers put into making all these Brisbane events possible. So that was a unique perspective. And one of our own, our president of the YAC, Saagar Rajan, he actually won Youth Volunteer of the Year. So I think it shows a lot of promise for the YAC program and shows that one of our owner going on to do really good things. And lastly, we did the Halloween event, which is a dog costume contest every Halloween. And we actually created this event around two years ago, and all of the proceeds go towards Paws, which is Paws Are Wonderful, which is a nonprofit located in the Mission District of San Francisco. And their proceeds go to helping underprivileged pet owners help care for their pets because not everyone has those, you know, resources to do so. And one of our people in office, Commissioner Kern, he actually came and showed up and entered himself in his doggin, and he actually won his second year in a row. So we hope to see Commissioner Kern next year at the next Halloween costume contest, and hopefully he can make it three years in a row, winning one of our awards. So yeah, that was a little bit of what we did this fall, and then I'll pass it to Sasha to talk a little bit about what we've been involved with during winter. Thank you, guys.
So during winter, one of our most successful events every year in Brisbane is the Festival of Lights, where the community is able to come together, and our YAC team passed out hot chocolate as well as cookies and cider, and that was very successful. We also helped put up the middle school dances, and the youth is able to come together and de-stress in our Brisbane Rec Center in Mission Blue. And we also went to Yak Attack very recently, and that is when Yak from other communities and cities come together and teach each other life skills. This is a for-youth-by-youth event, and Nicole actually ran a resume building workshop, which everyone really enjoyed. I'll be passing it on to Avni, which will be talking about spring.
Okay, so in the spring, we had three main events. We had the Teen Wellness Retreat, which was similar to Yak Attack. There were many different workshops that were mental health-based and mental health-oriented. One of them was about de-stress, where you break plates. And that was something that I wanted to take away and bring into our YAC as well. We also went to the wildfire awareness event, where it was mostly information about insurance and fire safety. And we basically just helped by setting up and taking down tables there, and it's actually coming up this weekend. And then we also did teen tech support, which was basically every weekend we went and we helped out senior citizens with different technological issues that they may have had. And I'm going to actually pass this over to Saagar to talk more about that.
All right. Yeah, so our teen, our senior tech help, our teen technology support, as we call it, has been one of our most distinguished events or programs within the YAC. And it's something that we started with just the idea of helping the community and extending our support more than just the youth in Brisbane, but rather to every single demographic and age group. And senior tech help has been amazing. I mean, week after week, there's always at least one to two YAC members. Now we have three or four that are coming in, going by, building those relationships up with seniors. And I would say honestly, more important than the tech problems that we fix are those relationships and friendships that are born as we help them with creating a contact or solving a tech issue, and they reward us by telling us a funny story or giving some of their life experiences. And so I think senior tech help has really been a testament to how strong YAC is in Brisbane and really the influence that we've been able to have.
Yeah, so the next thing that we want to talk about is, oh, actually, it was this slide, yeah. California Parks and Recreation Society's District 4 Group, YRTS, holds annual events for YACs from all over the peninsula. One of those events that gets held is the YAC Social, which is a good event for these YACs to come together and sort of bond over different activities. The photo in the top, in the bottom right is me playing softball at one, or, yeah, at one of these events. And another major thing that we do at YAC Social is actually plan for the other major event, which is Yak Attack. At Yak Attack, we go to several sessions which help build life experiences. So things like resume building, which Nicole did, as well as how to deal with burnout and anxiety and that sort of thing from a panel. So it's a lot of very helpful lessons that we learn and teach each other. So, yeah.
Awesome. Thank you, guys, for listening. I think there's, I think it's just one slide over. Awesome. Thank you, guys, so much for listening to our presentation. This year, we've had a lot of seniors on YAC. We had Sasha Gelslechter, Dr. Johnson, Kate Cohn, Alarian Kovacev, Pierre Lorenson, and myself. And so we just want to say thank you to all the seniors who helped out. And of course, as always, none of the work that we're able to do is really possible without Sarah. Sarah devotes a lot of time to really communicating with us, staying in contact, helping us with ideas. And so beyond just the seniors, beyond anything, the real backbone of Brisbane's YAC is Sarah. So shout out to Sarah as always. I know she's sick, so she's not there, but I hope she's on the Zoom or somewhere where we can say thank you to Sarah. I mean, it really helps this YAC, and it's the reason why we're able to shine in Brisbane and why other cities like Pacifica look at us for influence on senior tech and everything. So, been awesome. Yeah. Do you guys have any questions, anything we can do that, oh, help you understand what we do at YAC a little better?
Well, thank you. Thank you so much. It's really great to see what our students are doing here for the community and within the community and for themselves. And I think that it's really important to see this kind of leadership and life skills come out. Does any of the council members have a question or a comment for the members of the YAC and the staff?
I feel like a proud mom.
Yeah, yeah, no, the work that you've done in our community is fantastic. And you can tell that you really enjoy it, right? That enthusiasm just, you know, oozes out of you, and it gives us hope, right, for the future. Because, you know, if young people aren't taking steps, right, to get involved and be active, you know, then, then what kind of future are we going to have? So I'm just, I have a question, though. I mean, you guys are all into this. Are there young, you know, like the middle schools, are we getting a lot of kids wanting to build your shoes when you graduate?
Oh, yeah, definitely. So that was why we created the Associate Board. Technically, a YAC, as per like the guidelines for all the Parks and Rec cities in the Bay Area, it's strictly supposed to be teenagers with a priority to high schoolers. But we created that Associate Board to really get more involvement in with the Brisbane community since we don't have a high school, but we have a very good middle school. And so we are, we are very popular. I mean, we have to turn down people because we have so many applicants. I mean, if we wanted to accept everyone, it would be over forty to fifty members. And so our Associate Board is still really strong. And every year, there may be six seniors leaving, but I can assure you, there'll be eight or nine freshmen or seventh and eighth graders joining. So the YAC is only growing, it's only getting bigger, and it's only getting better.
Wow, wow, that's awesome. Congratulations.
Colleen?
I think you all seem so wise, so far beyond your years, you don't even realize it yet because this is typically more what you'd see on a college campus, what you're doing now. I was really impressed with the fact that you're mentoring the middle schoolers. And when I heard about the event that you had resume writing, I mean, what inertia does everyone have at your age, first jobs, writing resumes? What a fantastic idea that is, just to be thinking that way. You're so far ahead of the curve. I see all of Brisbane's next future generation of leaders sitting right here. Thank you for what you're doing. It's really impressive.
Yeah, so I'm happy to go next. So the YAC was around when I was in high school. I don't know exactly when it was started, but I believe at some point there was a lapse. And when I joined the Park and Recreation Commission, it's something that we were able to reinstitute. And so it's really great to see that it's thriving. And so much so that you have an overwhelming amount of people that want to join. So that's really comforting to know that, you know, even though the YAC might have died for a little bit there, that it's back with a vengeance. And I just want to encourage you, you know, if serving your community is something that fills your heart and that you love doing, you should consider applying for one of the city's commissions and committees. I served on Park and Recreation when I was 21, 22. I was in college. And there, I think you have to be maybe at least 18, but if you're going to go to school locally, that's kind of the next step because there's no more YAC once you're in college, right? So I would really encourage you, if you have the time, and it may obviously not be in your first few years of college, but at some point, if you're still living in Brisbane and you're here, this is kind of the next big step. So think about joining a commission and committee. We have Open Space and Ecology, we have Planning, we have Park and Recreation, we have Idea Committee, which is a new committee, Complete Street Safety. And we could use young voices. So keep that in the back of your mind. But thank you for all the work that you guys do for Brisbane.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for joining us and for taking the time. Thank you so much. And...
Two of our six seniors are in the room tonight, and Saagar, of course, is joining us over Zoom, but we do want to present them with a certificate of appreciation. So for Alarian, if you can come up. And Sasha. And this is for outstanding service to the Brisbane community.
Thank you so much and congratulations. And you guys can leave if you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting. So feel free if you're so inclined.
You guys got homework.
Thank you so much. Oh, somebody forgot a sweatshirt. Okay, that is going to move us on to awards and presentations. And we have Item B, which is proclaiming May 2024 as Wildfire Awareness Month. Is it Awareness Month or Preparedness Month?
Awareness Month.
Excuse me?
It's Preparedness and Clyde is here to accept both after you read the proclamation, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Well, I have it listed as one way on my speech and one way on my proclamation. So we will go ahead with the proclamation for Wildfire Preparedness Month, May 2024. Whereas in California, over 2 million homes are at risk of wildfire. And whereas last year, 7,127 wildfires burned 324,917,000 acres, excuse me, 324,917 acres, make it a little smaller, across the state. And whereas each year's more people move into wildland urban interface areas, it is crucial to raise awareness among our citizens on how they can protect their property from wildfire losses. And whereas Genesee Project, formerly known as Zone Haven, has been adopted as a countywide tool to assist with informed evacuations during wildfire, and we encourage know your zone before an emergency arises. And whereas the North County Fire Authority encourages fire safe behavior by all who live, work, and recreate throughout the city of Brisbane. And whereas for wildfire risks and emergencies, by taking necessary steps to make effective changes to our homes and landscapes to reduce the risk of wildfire. And now therefore, I, Terry O'Connell, Mayor of the City of Brisbane, on behalf of the City Council, do proclaim May 2024 as Wildfire Preparedness Month and encourage all Brisbane residents to increase their knowledge and awareness of proper safety measures to protect themselves from the devastating effects of wildfire. And if you'd like to come forward for the proclamation, and then you can say a few words. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, and members of the City Council, on behalf of the North County Fire Authority, thank you so much for recognizing this month for Wildfire Preparedness Month and our upcoming Wildfire Awareness Event, and here's where the confusion was, which will be, it will be not this Saturday, but next Saturday, May 11th, at the Community Park, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And we'll also be having, we've invited our Brisbane Lions Club, which will be putting on a great barbecue out there, and they'll be selling barbecue lunches as well. So hopefully that'll bring out the community. It'll be probably some really nice weather and teaching the community about wildfire awareness. We'll also have our Brisbane Police Department out there and information from the Sematow County Department of Emergency Management and Zone Haven and just basically educating the community about all those great things we're doing here in the community for Welfare Preparedness Month and for our Wildfire Awareness Event. So we hope to see everybody out there and everybody watching at home, to invite them out. Again, that's the following Saturday, May 11th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at our Community Park here in Brisbane.
Thank you so much, and thank you for all the service that North County Fire gives to us and for helping us to be prepared and better equipped to deal with emergencies. Thank you.
Thanks for keeping us safe.
So we're going to go ahead and move on to the next proclamation, which is Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital service provided by North County Fire Authority and other emergency medical teams. And whereas access to quality pre-hospital emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas pre-emergency medical, emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrative, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of the North County Fire Authority, firefighters, paramedics, and EMTs, as well as other emergency medical services providers, by designating the Emergency Medical Services Week. And now therefore, I, Terry O'Connell, Mayor of the City of Brisbane, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through 25th, 2024, as Emergency Medical Services Week. And thank you so much. And we have a proclamation for you. Did I not give you time for the last one? Thank you. Please go ahead.
I'm, obviously, I accept this on behalf of our Emergency Medical Services Division, and I'd like to thank all of you for this proclamation. And just to let you know, I mean, I'm sure you're very familiar with our Brisbane Fire Department and all of our fire stations, that every one of our fire engines here in Sematow County has at least one firefighter that's a paramedic. And I can remember back in the mid-'90s, when we were starting to get into paramedic service, and it was a change for the fire service. We just provided EMT and firefighting services. But it's been a great leap forward, and, you know, countless of lives have been saved by having at least one of our firefighters being a paramedic. I'll excuse me, on every one of our fire engines here in Sematow County that provides a very high level of service to the citizens of our community when they call 911. So I just want to thank you for recognizing Emergency Medical Services Week here in City Brisbane.
Thank you for all you do. We need you. So thank you.
Thank you.
That moves us to Item E, which is a presentation from the Jackie Spear Foundation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members, for the opportunity to come and talk to you about the Jackie Spear Foundation and her first initiative, the Baby Bonus Program. If Jackie was in town, she'd be here, but she's not. And so I'm Cheryl Young, and I'm with Philanthropic Ventures Foundation, and Jackie's new foundation is under the umbrella of our foundation. You know, when Jackie came home after serving in Congress, she looked around and she was absolutely stunned with the level of poverty in Sematow County. And she then said, this is where I'm going to focus my time and energy on poverty that's impacting women and children here in Sematow County. She produced a report called Hidden in Plain Sight that really lays out the problems and the statistics in housing, childcare, food insecurity, and domestic violence. Sematow County, which is the fourth richest county in the nation, and where we have 10% of our children in this county between birth and five, live below the poverty level. Some of the alarming statistics are that overall, 27,000 children in this county live in poverty. The food banks are serving record numbers of families. Second harvest feeding, I know you know this better than I do, are serving 100,000 residents a month in this county. Percentages of children that would qualify for free lunches, if those were in place, range from 10% to 60% in school districts throughout Sematow County and almost 20% here in Brisbane. So last year, she went throughout the So last year, she went throughout the county and she held what were called listening tours to talk to women about their issues, their challenges, and their recommendations and ideas for change. She also spent time taking a look at programs in the past and recent research. The National Child Tax Credit Program reduced poverty for children 50% when it was in place. It's no longer in place. She also found a recent NIH demonstration project that showed for the first time, although we all knew this, the relationship between poverty and baby brain development. And in that project, they gave some families $300 a month for three years, and then a sample group that didn't get that money. After only one year, they found out that the families that were receiving the $300 a month, the babies through EEGs, there was more brain activity and more brain development. They also found that the families were buying things like books and learning materials for their children and that the parents, the families, were spending more time with their children. So Jackie has put together her moonshot challenge for Sematole County. She says, we can't wait. So her first initiative is a baby bonus program. It's a multi-agency program that builds on the NIH study and yet goes farther. Because what this program will do is not only give families a cash amount per month, but also will offer families wraparound or support services. And the program will be in place for three years. There'll be family engagement, there already is, in the design, as well as the implementation of the program. There are anywhere between 1,012,000 babies, Medi-Cal babies, born each year in Sematole County. In this project, we're hoping we'll have the funding for at least 400 babies randomly selected and welcomed and greeted in the hospital to become enrolled in the program. They will then receive $300 a month for three years, as well as the entryway into support services. A robust evaluation is being designed by Stanford, which will also include a control group. Jackie feels that we have to seek and try groundbreaking solutions that can work and then can be replicated throughout California as well as the nation. Or we can accept status quo, and I don't think any of us are willing to accept that. Anyone who knows Jackie knows that what she sets out to do, she becomes successful. We have a short video that reminds us all about how the impossible is possible, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Sure, please go ahead.
So Cheryl, how can the communities be helpful in this endeavor?
Well, right now, we're approaching the Health Plan, the Peninsula Healthcare District and Sequoia Healthcare District, the major foundations, Sabrato, the CZI, the tipping point for funding for this project, as well as individuals. You're the first city to invite us to come and present the proposal. It would be, we looked at the numbers and in, we don't have the numbers for 2023, but for 2022, there were nine Medi-Cal babies born from Brisbane. And it would be awesome if this might be the first city to want to partner, be a partner with this project and help fund babies for the project. Thank you.
Please go ahead, Madison.
If the city wanted to, say earmark money, could we create the stipulation that we wanted it to go to Brisbane families?
Yes, you know, I was thinking about that as I came over, because as I said, you're the first ones to really have done that. We'd have to talk with Stanford, who's doing the valuation, but I think there could be different cohorts set up so that that's possible. We are looking at Peninsula Healthcare District wants to make sure their funding goes for babies in their catchment area. So Stanford has assured me that they can look at ways to make this all work. So I think we could do that. I think it's possible.
So a quick question. This program is just in its infancy, so to speak. It's not up and running yet. It's still being worked on as far as, it's not out helping in the communities as of yet. It's still in the startup phase.
Correct. The program, we're hoping, planning to launch it January of 2025. I talk about it as a program, as we're building the cars, we go down the street. We have a number of subgroups that keep getting more information and improving on how this program can work. What it's going to end up doing is not only helping the families that are in this cohort, but it's going to change the whole system in this county in terms of services that babies get from day one in the hospital.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, just thank you for just being a part of this. And yeah, I really like your question, Madison, about being able to earmark the funds that potentially could come from the city to help our Medicare babies in Brisbane. And so I hope that you can find some way to make that work and bring that back to our city staff so that they can present it to us at a future council meeting.
That'll be great. We have our next core meeting next Wednesday, and so I'll present this to the group. Stanford will be at that, and we'll get back to you right after that.
Thank you.
Question. Is there, like, I know, you know, this is the first city that you're speaking with, but is there an amount that would be something that you would be looking for? Because the council is going to enter budget season, and so if this is something that we wanted to consider supporting, it would be good for us to have an idea of, like, what is an impactful number? Like, if we could say, we could earmark, you know, to support one child, one family a year, or would it be like, or three families a year? Or would you want, like, a commitment for an amount that serves that child for the full three years?
Let me get back to you on that. I can see a number of different ways that we might be able to go with that. You know, most of the administrative costs are being covered by in-kind. So the county is funding the staffing for this. So we're really focusing on raising the money that will go directly to the families.
Hi, thank you very much for the presentation. You mentioned the county, and it kind of gets the wheels turning in my mind. Has the county at all approached this initiative with you about prenatal care and dealing with the healthcare from the time that child is born in terms of funding? Because oftentimes, the county will designate funding to nonprofits and different initiatives.
Right. The county now, the prenatal care and then after birth, public health has a limited amount of funding to provide the services. What we're hoping through this project is that we can demonstrate the impact and the outcomes of serving families with a cash bonus, as well as the wraparound services, with the intent of the county funding it moving forward or with state money, and of course Jackie wants to take it so that it's a national child tax credit program, and has already started to talk to a number of people in Congress about that. So yes, there is definitely the intent of looking at what's now, what this program, what additionally would come as a result of this program, and how it could be funded at the end of the three years.
And you mentioned Stanford. Is that coming from Stanford Healthcare? I'm just curious whether there are different healthcare organizations that have also gotten involved in this.
Yeah, at Stanford now, this has really become quite a project. That's all I can say. I keep calling it a multi-agency project, but at least four schools at Stanford are sitting in on a team, and that includes education, hospital, medicine, and the new program that the Stanford Guaranteed Income Program is housed under now. So they have all come together because they are very interested in this program and helping to, you know, put together the data that shows whether a program works like this or not. It's never been done with babies and young families. It's been done with teenagers and older adults. So Stanford is definitely interested in tapping into their funding sources for the program.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking as well, the opportunity for some research and data, since we're in this area with all these wonderful hospitals and medical organizations.
Yeah, the thing that's going to make this work is, five years ago, we couldn't have done something like this in terms of collecting data. And now with the Health Plan, we will have the data on every single baby born in Sematole County, can follow what services the baby gets and needs. You know, it's really, talk about, you know, the golden window. This is it.
Well, thank you so much for your presentation and keep ourselves and our staff informed on your progress.
Yes, we'll keep you informed, and if you'd like to get involved, come on over.
Thank you. Okay, that will move us to oral communications, number one. Is there any members of the public wishing to speak on an item not on our agenda tonight? Having no slips and seeing no hands raised, do we have any members of the public in the Zoom meeting who'd like to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, there's no hands raised at this time.
Thank you. That moves us to the consent calendar. Can I get a first and a second to approve consent items F through O?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so first by Cliff and second by Madison, and all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. That moves us to new item, business, item P, which is to adopt a resolution to appoint Jeremy Dennis as city manager and authorize the mayor to execute the employment agreement. Under item P, the council will consider adopting a resolution appointing Jeremy Dennis as city manager effective June 24, 2024, and authorizing the mayor to sign an employment agreement between the city and Mr. Dennis. The resolution is in the agenda packet for item P. The resolution provides for the following. In accordance with the Government Code Section 54953(c)(3), the city manager's salary and benefits will be an annual salary of $315,000. The benefits provided to the city manager include vacation, sick leave, and medical benefits shall be the same as those provided to the city's executive management group. Mr. Dennis will begin employment with 128 hours of personal leave, combined vacation, and sick leave. Mr. Dennis will also receive 80 hours of administrative leave annually, but such leave must be taken within 12 months or it is lost. The terms of the agreement is from June 24, 2024, through June 25, 2027. Before the vote, is there any public comment? Any members of the public who would like to comment on this item? Having no slips and seeing no hands raised, are there any members of the public who would like to comment?
No, Madam Mayor, I see no hands raised.
Okay. Are there any council questions or discussion?
I do not.
I do not. No. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I just would like to say how pleased I am to be welcoming Jeremy Dennis to this team here at City Hall and that we are very excited to be transitioning. It's going to be a really exciting time here in Brisbane, and we will still have the services of our current city council city manager, Clay Holstein, for a little bit of time yet. But I'm really glad that we're able to do this. So can I get a first and a second to adopt the resolution to appoint Jeremy Dennis as city manager and authorize the mayor to execute the employment agreement?
So moved.
And a second, we'll do a moved and a second. And with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. So thank you, and I think it's with great excitement that we make this announcement, that it's official. Okay, that moves us to item Q, which is planning program for 70 Old County Road, Parkside, Crocker Park. And it's being recommended that the city council provide direction to the planning staff for future planning efforts in the area and authorize staff to prepare a scope of work reflecting the city council's direction. So with that, can I get a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. As you recall, the property in question, about 1.2 acres, formerly the B of A site, was acquired by the city in October of 2022. Earlier, or after that was done, city staff did look into initiating a planning program just addressing the subject property. Any grid, if you can put up the exhibit when you have an opportunity. There were concerns raised at that point in time that limiting the planning efforts to that particular property, not taking into account the larger site context, the adjacent shopping center, other properties within Parkside, that that would be maybe not the best planning program to focus just on the site. And subsequent to those kind of conversations, there were other conversations with the Economic Development Subcommittee about looking at other sites even more broadly in Crocker Park that could be accommodating housing in the form of mixed use or other forms. And so before we reinitiate this planning program, felt it was appropriate to get the council's input in terms of rightsizing it, scale, scope, and what your objectives are, to better create a request for proposals. So whatever work, whatever proposals we get are responsive to the council's needs and desires. Did outline, obviously, there's different implications in terms of each of these approaches. Time costs are usually reduced when you're dealing with the smaller property. But then again, the idea of the context is important, and, you know, there could be unintended consequences if we do plan that site absent a broader look. And then obviously, the issue of housing in other parts of Crocker Park or an expanded Parkside, or whatever the council's interest might be. There will be, you know, future RENA cycles and more housing needs. We don't know what those numbers would be, but certainly for the city to be looking at that sooner than later could put the city in a better position to respond to those issues as they arise in the future. There was a planning, a policy added to the housing program to at least consider mixed use in Crocker Park. There was a planning, or policy added to the housing program to at least consider mixed use in Crocker Park. You know, there was no obligation to do that, and the timing of that wasn't required to be undertaken until, I think, '26. So there's several years ahead of that, but if you were to look at a broader program, we could indicate we accomplished that now. But with that, really waiting to get the council's input, and I'll answer any questions you might have.
Okay, so this is just to give direction, we don't really have formal motion to make. Is there any comments that the economic subcommittee would like to make to start this off, or what your theories or thought process was?
Wait, are we doing questions first?
Oh, I guess, we can do, we can do staff questions first, sorry.
I have just a few questions, sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
So I noticed in the staff report, you mention Program 2.8.7, study zoning amendments to existing commercial districts at Sierra Point and Crocker Park to either allow or require mixed-use buildings, which should be done by 2026. So wouldn't we want to include Sierra Point as part of the discussion? Because then it seems like you have the opportunity to kill two birds with one stone. If we're going to have to look at that anyway, then, because it says like, undertaking such analysis now would satisfy the housing element program, but it doesn't seem like that would be true if we're not also having a conversation about Sierra Point, right?
That is a good point. I think certainly Crocker, Parkside, the Village is, you know, in a way, kind of an area, a geographic area that's probably to get your arms around as a single planning effort. If you go out to Sierra Point, it is kind of a whole different animal. I suggest if you did want to do Sierra Point, you'd probably be better off doing it separately, just to, just to make it easier for, I think, for the community to engage in, and for the council and decision-makers. You could do both, but again, that'll add, I think, complexity and cost to it. And I think the issues out there are very different than they are throughout the other area in question.
So when you created that program, you anticipated having two different, doing two different processes? Because I could see, I could see, you know, one conversation being around housing, and one consultant talking about housing, and one consultant talking about, you know, the economic development portion of like, planning the Bank of America site and the Village? Because those, those could also include housing, but, so in your mind, initially, you thought it would be two separate things?
Yeah, but I mean, it's the council's choice. I think it'd be easier for, you know, if we were to move forward, we'd be moving forward with different amendments, I believe, because one would be focused on Crocker or Parkside, or whatever the scope was. Another would be directed towards Sierra Point. But, you know, that's the council discretion. You know, it's your call, if you want to do both of them in a single planning effort. I think it does add a little level of complication, that's just my perspective on that.
I can see that. So if we don't do that, then we'd be in violation of our own...
Violation is kind of a strong word, I mean, I would argue, I mean, we, one, we have several years to get there, right? So it's not like we're needing to do that at the current time. That could be undertaken in the future. You know, you have planning entitlements and going through environmental analysis out at Sierra Point as well. So it might be a better time to do that once all those entitlements have run through the process. Because right now, you'd be planning on top of maybe private development applications that you haven't had the opportunity to evaluate, or the community hasn't been able to review. So I think there is kind of a logical sequence of, that puts Sierra Point out on a different track than what you might want to do out at Crocker and Parkside in the Village.
Okay, but either way, we have to study this by 2026.
And study, I mean, study, if the council ultimately were, said, at Sierra Point, said, "We're not interested in it." That is a policy direction, then we just report that that was the policy direction the city took. We will have ticked it off the list. It doesn't mean we're taking a positive action. Study could be, the council's had no interest in that particular component, and that's still responsive to our obligation under the housing element.
Okay. That was my major question.
Any other questions for staff?
I have a couple. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to go?
Go ahead.
Okay. Councilmember Davis telepathically stole my question, but I have another one. Parkside, Parkside was there, and at the time, Parkside passed through Brisbane with all the community engagement. At the time, it was mentioned that Parkside might be expanded to also encompass the shopping center. I'm just curious, this is, this is kind of a large ball of wax to approach. Are you thinking, I, I'm curious about how you would approach this in terms of, is this going back to Parkside, revisiting and saying, okay, this is how the shopping center could in fact interact with the Parkside plan? And then dealing with Crocker as a separate issue at the same time? Or are you thinking of a consultant to come in and dust off Parkside? Just give me a sense of, of how you would do this? Because I can't envision this going forward without really extensive community engagement. But as we know from Parkside, people don't know what they want. They always know what they hate. And so it's almost prescribed that you have to find out what they do not envision or will tolerate for a change.
Yeah, I think you've hit part of the challenge on the head, and why we want to make sure we hire a good firm that will be able to sort of extract out community visioning, and make sure we really do have a robust program to really pull out community input. In terms of Parkside, Parkside had sort of a component of, it had sort of two pieces. One is the regulatory result, which were the overlay districts that were adopted. So the, to meet our RENA from that cycle, we put those housing overlays, and I think they're shown in, I don't know what sort of a hatch, apologize, those are really hard to see. The green and the yellow hatched areas on that exhibit you have in front of you. There was some visioning component of Parkside with B of A and the shopping center. It wasn't regulatory in nature, there wasn't any particular land use recommendations. So in a way, what we'd be looking at, if that's the council's desire, is to look at that piece of Parkside, which was kind of more of a thought piece, and either revisit the vision, or, or if you want to come up with a more of a regulatory approach that, you know, at some point, you really, your vision, the city's vision, is that the shopping center turn into something in the future? You know, what kind of, whether by overlay or some regulatory sort of piece to that, if that's what you want to do, and that's what we would look at doing then. So Parkside could result, you know, you could have the same boundaries. We'd pull out the parcels, you'd do whatever visioning, whatever changes we want to do. And if it ended up resulting in some sort of zoning or land use requirements, we could amend the general plan or the zoning as appropriate. Again, depending on the result of what the community process leads to. But we have that ability, and hanging it on Parkside is probably a good way of doing it. That would be the starting point, some context, and then we really focus on what the changes or the areas the council's interested in focusing on today.
Okay, thank you for that, and I have another kind of two-pronged question that has come up regarding this. I was asked whether the city could actually move forward on something like this where there's private property involved in all of these areas. And the second part of what I was asked, do we have somewhere a developer waiting in the wings that has some plan that is actually behind this coming to the council now? So if you could clarify that for the public, I'd appreciate it.
I'm not aware of any developer who the city's been engaged on, or that the shopping center owner's been engaged on with some land use changes, so on that side. No, I'm not aware of anything of that matter. In regard to the city's ability to impose land use policy or zoning regulations on private property, yes, we have that right. We do that all the time through our general plan, through our zoning ordinance. So, you know, a precise plan is just a different tool to impose the same sort of regulatory control, land use control.
So much like Parkside Plan, having the residents and the city provide a vision for an area to existing private property owners on commercial properties is what we're trying to do.
Exactly, it's, and you do that with your general plan, right? You've established what land use desires you want to see happen over time on property as well. So no different, just in a more focused area.
It's public planning instead of reacting, we're being proactive as to what we want to see.
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
John, so we, we have listed here Parkside, 1 and 2, Bank of America, and then we have the outline of the entire industrial park. If we're going to be visioning for the future, realizing that we're going to be under some constraints or restrictions or demands from the RENA numbers, why don't we expand the vision to include a little bit more than is listed here? Just from a visionary perspective, who knows what we can come up with? We have a very creative group of people who live in our town. I've already made a couple of suggestions, and I think it'd be really nice for us to put it out to the public, what's possible, is that...
I think maybe getting back to the mayor's request for the subcommittee to sort of elaborate on what you're thinking. I mean, we're open to whatever the council's desire is on the scope, both geographic scope, vision, you know, objectives. So that's really what we're here to have your input and provide us the guidance of what you want to move forward with.
I'd like to expand.
That'll come under discussion, I guess.
But is that possible?
Yes, it's absolutely possible.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
I have one. You didn't get a chance.
I don't have any questions, just ready for discussion.
Okay. This is a question for staff or for the subcommittee. Whoever wants to take it, I, I mean, I guess you're kind of answering it here, but, you know, this started with like, planning Bank of America, and then it moved into planning, well, let's not piecemeal, let's plan Bank of America and the Village. And now it's like, let's revisit all of the whole Parkside plan. It just seems like, and now you're saying like, let's look at all, like, let's, let's, let's expand it even further. And to me, this is so beyond what I thought we as a council were going to be doing. That it's, it's actually mind-boggling me right now in this, in this instance. And so I'm just very confused as to how we have gone from, you know, really wanting to figure out what we're doing with this parcel that we own, that the public keeps asking us about, and how that one thing now seems to be this huge thing that we're considering planning for many, many, many parcels in our city, and the costs associated. You know, this council wants to talk a lot about budget lately, and we have only $150,000 set aside for consultants. This sounds like a way bigger scope, a lot more money, and it just, it just doesn't seem in alignment with what we originally talked about. So I'm just very confused, and I don't know where this is coming from.
Well, again, I think there's been an evolution, and there are options in front of the council. Nothing's being recommended to you, you're not being, nothing's been decided. That's really the point of this, if, you know, there may be different perspectives on this, and whatever scale, scope, it's really your prerogative what this program is. If you want to pare it back down to something less ambitious or aggressive, that's really the point of this meeting, is for you to decide what is the scope and the scale of what's under consideration.
I guess what I'm assuming is that you guys as a subcommittee had a conversation about something maybe bigger than, than, maybe I'm just misremembering, which is totally possible, but I just don't know, as a subcommittee, did you guys talk about making this a whole lot bigger?
No, that, I had an idea.
Okay.
Just an idea, that's why I asked the question.
Well, it just seems like from the staff report, like, that's already was something that was kind of discussed, so...
I think maybe...
I just wasn't under the, I just wasn't under the, I wasn't under the understanding, and maybe I'm just forgot that we were going to evaluate like, all of Parkside again.
So, if, if I may, so yeah, yeah, so we decided to, to not look at, at the B of A site and other parts around it prior to getting our housing element adopted, right? We wanted just to keep this as a separate issue, not a housing element issue. We know that Parkside, the last time, when we were dealing with our housing element, it was, it was a very important part, right? And that contributed to the numbers that we had. So once we were done with the housing element, then we started looking at the B of A site, and what makes sense? And standalone, it's a very difficult site. But we've also talked about, you know, potentially using it for housing. So then we started to have those conversations about potentially partnering with the Village.
That's, I remember all this.
Right, so then, you know, we start to look at, well, okay, so, you know, what was the footprint for, for Parkside? And were we successful in getting affordable housing or getting any kind of housing within Parkside? And it's like, hmm, perhaps not, you know, maybe we should reevaluate that.
Say that again.
So the Parkside Plan designated or did a zoning overlay, right? You can keep your commercial zoning, right, uses. But if you wanted to do housing, you could also do housing too. So there's this overlay, we weren't forced, we weren't forcing these property owners to do housing.
Right.
You had the choice.
Right.
All right. So looking at that particular footprint in the subcommittee, we're saying, okay, well, is this working, right? Are we achieving those goals, right? Because when you do, when you put forth the housing element, right, you, you have intentions of hopefully building housing, right? And so then we thought, okay, well, does it make sense to look at this particular footprint? Or are there other properties, right? In, within the industrial park, that potentially might make sense. And when you're in the subcommittee, you know, you, sometimes you just spitball, you know, ideas, right? It doesn't mean that, okay, yes, we're going to do it, but, you know, you, you take a look. And then, but of course, you know, the, a subcommittee doesn't make the rules, right? You can't from the subcommittee make the contract. You have an idea, and then you bring it to the full council to see, you know, is there something there, right? And one of the properties that, you know, we talked about, you know, or properties, was, you know, the, the area around City, City Hall. Yeah, and so does the area around City Hall make sense to expand, you know, Parkside 2.0? You know, that's, that's something that we as a council should discuss fully. And so it's just really, as Karen is saying, you, it's just bringing forth some ideas and seeing what's the, the temperature of the council. But, you know, there is one thing I will say about wanting to do this. You know, it's, I mean, in the staff report, it just talked about the housing element, you know, and that, you know, we need to do this type of analysis by 2026. But really, you know, and I, and I think when we did the precise plan, when we were reaching out to the community, it was really about, okay, what, what do you want to see for the entrance of town? You know, how do we create a, a more vibrant way of coming into town? Can we create more affordable housing with mixed use? And, and I feel that the, the input that we got from the community was fantastic, right? And so can we take that, the information that we received from the public? And so, can we take that, the information that we received from the public and come up with something that potentially is, you know, provides better direction than what we've done in the past?
So to clarify, if I'm understanding you correctly, you've met, you mentioned like Parkside, you mentioned a little bit about affordable housing, and like, reevaluating whether this is working. So, the, like, the thought process from your perspective is, you know, can there, can we include more parcels in Parkside? Or can we re-envision Parkside as a whole to yield more affordable housing because the current overlay hasn't done so? Is that the point of reworking it?
That is one of the goals, absolutely. You know, is to create more opportunity to actually create some affordable housing.
Madam Mayor, may I inject for one minute, please?
Sure.
Thank you, Councilmember Lance, that really opened my eyes to a lot. I think what you're saying, it's timely. I think there's one other component, though, you are the Economic Development Subcommittee. And any change at the entrance to town, I would assume you also had conversations about tax base, sales tax, revenue producing, and where at present, we have a shopping center that literally has its back turned to Bay Shore, which is not friendly and welcoming to business.
Totally agree.
And the potential that, looking at it all as just parcels rather than existing buildings, there is so much opportunity there for both housing, to satisfy the housing element, and to revitalize Brisbane with a tax base.
Absolutely. It's always been looked at with mixed use intent.
I think that if this is something, never mind, this is discussion. I'll defer and wait for public comment first.
We've gone so far afield from where I thought this was going that my head is reeling. I don't understand how economic development is affordable housing, and that's the road we've gone down, is affordable housing.
Yes.
From the Economic Development Subcommittee perspective. My question to staff, and I'm not sure I'm going to word this right because my head is feeling like it's going to explode with what this conversation's been. If we're looking at this parcel to create more affordable housing, and looking at expanding our breadth of study to create more affordable housing, isn't that just telling the state we're able to produce more housing? When we can't get any off the ground as it is? So are we giving an unrealistic expectation that we're going to change existing building structures to being housing? Because that's what the state wants, and that's what they're pushing us to give? And affordable housing at that, which I don't even know how you do without billions of dollars? Isn't that giving a unrealistic yay-up thumbs to the state saying, we can do this and we can even do more?
I guess, you know, the state and their housing element, whatever, when 2031 comes around, when the next housing element is done, there'll be an exercise of looking at what are the city's housing sites? What is our housing allocation? And there'll be that reckoning in 2031. So the idea of you've planned now for housing, what would be happening is you'd be getting credit for it if, for 2031, the next housing element cycle. I don't think there's any, I mean, certainly, if you were to rezone or do whatever in this current housing element cycle, you exceeded your obligations. It's really neither here nor there with the state. As long as you do what you told the state you were going to do, the state is satisfied. That's what they're looking at, what our 20 current housing element requires, not if you add more housing sites or whatever. But I guess what I'm maybe getting tripped up here is, there's nothing in here that says the directive of the Parkside Amendment or the review is for housing. Clearly, what we're looking here for is direction of what the council's intent. If you are going to look at Parkside, if you're going to look at specific parcels, what are they for? You want to look at housing or mixed use? You want to look at economic opportunity at the entrance to town? You want all those things? Staff was not in position of guessing what, or determining, well, yeah, we should look at housing on the Bank of America side and look at some other use on the adjacent shopping center. The point of this is for you to provide the direction as to what you want studied for the community.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'm going to open it up to public comment. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing no hands raised. Do we have any members of the public online that would like to speak?
I have a hand raised from a guest CMF.
Please go ahead.
Hi, this is Chris Plakaski. This is a wonderful conversation, and I'm really glad to hear it. And it goes back, oddly enough, to the comments that I made at the last city council meeting, which is that we don't have this vision. If we had a vision, staff might not feel as lost as it seems that they are about what the intentions of the city council are. We don't need to be specific to a building, but we do need to know what our future is. The conversation we had yesterday made me very hopeful when we talk about traffic calming on Bay Shore Boulevard. The things, nothing is happening in isolation. If that were to happen, that would totally change the opportunity that we have with the B of A building, for example. But that's not going to happen in advance of anything else. So this is why I'm coming back to the idea of if we have a vision, and we talk about what we want for the city, then when we're looking at an opportunity for a property, we can measure it against that vision and that wish that we have. So I know that's a little, there's a lot of imagination involved, and it's not specific. But it would be interesting to explore. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other hands raised online?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing on this.
Wait, did you have your hand raised, Mitch?
Oh, sure, if, I didn't see your hand raised.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, you had asked a question about what housing kind of has to do with economic development. And here, these two things are inextricably linked. Because, you know, we've had conversations with State Teachers Retirement about the land at the front. We've had conversations with Prologis about their land throughout the park. And, you know, many of our warehouses are 60 years old and plus. And they're reaching the end of their viable lifespan. Now, we've had some conversation where Prologis wasn't, hell no, we're not doing anything. But they were, we've done something in the past in other locations where maybe we do a housing with the developer, where they don't fund it, but they are willing to give up the site as a warehouse. So in that regard, all these land parcels are inextricably linked to economic development as well as housing. Because we're going to have to find housing sites somewhere. And we have a lot of warehousing, we don't have a lot of housing sites. So that's where it kind of came from, through the Economic Development Subcommittee. So that's where we started.
You know, Mitch, I'm glad that you brought that up. And I was going to mention that after we had the public, yeah, comment period. You know, and I apologize for saying affordable housing, I said it a few times, and you and I are on the Affordable Housing Subcommittee. And, but as Mitch has said, you know, a lot of these things, you know, are interwoven. And, you know, just like how we've had the conversation about that biotech doesn't really provide income to the city, but we know that we make a tremendous amount of money off of the property tax. And, you know, redoing these properties and, you know, potentially having housing. And it doesn't mean that we're going to do it, but that would, that is an economic, you know, consideration. You know, in the end, it's really, you know, what is, what is the council, what would the council want to do for this part of our town? It has an economic component, you know, with the Village, but we, as you demonstrated, Colleen, it's, you know, we've got a lot of boarded up storefronts. It, you know, basically, it feels like it's just a couple of restaurants and the dental office and some others that are just trying to hold on. But it's not an area that's thriving. And then we own this piece of property that we do, you know, we pay the interest out of the general fund, right? So that costs us money every year. And we know that, you know, over a certain length of time, it's going to be a significant chunk of change, unless we do something with it and put it into some better use. And we don't want to, of course, have a property that's as vacant as you come into town. That's not good for economic development or any kind of, you know, like, welcoming to our community. And so those are the things that Karen and I have been wrestling with and trying to figure out. And as Mitch said, right, they do overlap, and we try not to, you know, get into someone else's dish as we're talking about economic development. But sometimes it is hard.
Okay, I... So, when we're looking at planning for this area, is it the Economic Development Subcommittee's thought process that if it were mixed use, that that could be feasible for the Bank of America site and perhaps the area that's adjacent? Is anyone building mixed-use spaces that actually are able to rent their lower uses? I mean, it doesn't seem that any of what I've seen being built that is residential and commercial space, the commercial space doesn't seem to be viable.
We're just getting tenants at One San Bruno.
Maybe.
Well, Skin Body's in, and there's the talk of the, you know, probably the preschool will open in the big, big space there. But that's, how long ago was that?
It's been 10, 15 years. It's been forever. I mean, we've had a lease to the Bank of America, to the people who are going to do the battery thing, and that's never moved forward. Are they paying on their lease?
Ample.
Yeah, they pay on their lease, but they aren't doing anything? I mean, we, I don't know. It's, and I was always under the impression that housing costs money, that the property tax does not cover what the services needed for housing is. Is that correct?
I think that's a really complex question. I mean, it's a great question. I think infill does better than like, building out where you have to put in a new fire station, police station, all that. Where you have infill development, housing does better. But yeah, there's a lot of things that do much better for us, you know, the life science buildings out at Sierra Point, the sales tax producer, all those things are a much better generator of a property tax base. I mean, I would say, you know, Mitch may be able to add to this. You know, in talking with real estate people these days, everything's hard.
Yes.
Everything is really, really difficult, including life science, including housing. Interest rates at the moment are making it very, very difficult. But there's other things, the land cost, cost of construction, you know, it's a difficult environment. In some ways, maybe it's the perfect time to plan.
Yes.
Because you can try to set yourself up to be able to take advantage of different opportunities in the marketplace down the road that, you know, right now, you're not under the pressure of a specific project. So I think it's, I think really, to me, listening to your conversation, and I know this is a difficult conversation, do you go big, do you go small? What do you do here? You know, I think you, that's the question you need to ask, is just how big you want to get. And then, you know, we're not going to figure out the uses tonight. I mean, to me, it's, you really want to just look at a variety of different potential uses that might make sense there, and get some professional planners in that can help us with that. Start talking to people in the marketplace that are developers and, you know, getting the sense from them. It's an iterative process, it's going to roll out over time. But maybe just right now, trying to get comfortable of where you want to focus this. We know we have the B of A site that we got to at least be thinking about, and the B of A and the shopping center just kind of lend themselves to go together. I think that's a minimum, and then you decide what beyond that you want to do. That's my thought.
I would be happy to give direction to staff to work on the planning process for the Bank of America site with the ability to be inclusive of the shopping center site. I mean, I know that when we've talked about the shopping center in the past, and it's, you know, back to Bay Shore, you know, there's lots of difficulties on even having access from Bay Shore into that site because of traffic and safety issues. And, you know, there's so many things that are going to go into any vision that we have. And, you know, not to mention how much public input there's going to need to be. So if that's what staff is looking for, is that what we want to give them? Or you said you wanted to increase the size, you said you didn't want to increase the size.
I will say that I think, to me, Parkside is where I'm comfortable going with respect to Crocker. I don't see Parkside, I don't see housing, I don't see mixed use there. I see it being housing only. We don't have enough commercial, we don't have enough people in this town to support that much more of that style of commercial. Then if you were to have, you know, more industrial type of commercial on the ground floor, to me, it's not compatible with housing. In addition to that, the height that you would need to get to to accommodate that type of commercial, those buildings would be immense. So, I am not, I am not in a place where, you know, I'm willing to reevaluate Parkside at this time. I respect the public comment we got, there is a vision, that is the vision. We spent a lot of time working on that vision. We spent a lot of time working with the community and money. To me, that, it was very thoughtfully done. And it was to, you know, create healthy communities. Places where you could live without a car, places where you could walk, you could bike, you could access public transit. I think what makes sense at this point is to look at the Village in addition to Bank of America. We have an obligation to do something with that property. You know, a big concern of mine initially was that that property was going to be blight for our community, that it was just going to sit there forever, and I'll be damned if that's at my own hands. That's why I said so, I said so often how important that property is to us. That is our gateway to our town. We have a responsibility. And I also think if we get a consultant, I would like them to give us a plan for just Bank of America in addition to a plan for both parcels. Because I don't want to rely on Bank of America getting developed because of whatever the owners of the Village may want to do or not want to do. We could be waiting here forever for them to decide they want to sell their property. We could be waiting here forever for them to decide they wanna sell their property. I'm not gonna hinge the whole future of that, of our parcel on whatever the village wants to do. So yeah, it's great in a perfect world, we'd love to plan both and like fix all of the problems there. But I'm just not so confident that the owners of the village are in that place where they're ready to embrace a new vision for their property or sell it to somebody who can enact on that. And somebody may buy it and they might wanna just keep it exactly the same too, exactly as it is. They may not wanna invest in changing it all. So I think we could be ambitious and come up with a plan for both parcels, but I think we need to be realistic and come up also with an alternative plan for just our parcel. And that's the extent that I'm willing to, to evaluate at this point.
If I may respectfully disagree with you. I think that change will come whether we plan for it or not. Brisbane Village may not have a vision of what they want, they may not want to do it, they may be holding on to property to speculate. Sometimes what moves something down the road is presenting the vision and not taking kind of that whole area as an entity because it actually affects beyond Brisbane Village. And you've got the area near City Hall and even where, where Ample is and Ample may or may not be there in five years. I, I think we need to look, that is an entrance to town. We had High Speed Rail came to us and was gonna change the entrance to town. That was gonna be Valley Drive. If we're gonna have a viable shopping center of, of any type of retail, is it Valley Drive? Is it Old County? We've not really looked at that in terms of, do we have the population to support retail? I would say a well-crafted vision with attractive retail is going to bring more business than what we've got, trying to dust it off and, and make it look nice. Because I, I don't know that we're appealing to all those thousands of cars that are going down Bay Shore every day. And in terms of housing, I think housing has to be part of the picture and the discussion because when John puts together the housing element and they say, okay, what is your immediate implementation of these goals? It's ADUs and ADUs and ADUs. And other communities that keep doing this are actually getting themselves in trouble because you can't just keep going, we're putting ADUs in backyards. And when they look at the housing element from the, the studying that I've been doing on it and following it, you can't even either just rely on, well, at some point, the Baylands has a, a large housing element there because we have no control over when that will happen. And if we're just going to not even plan ahead with anything else, I think we are, we are not looking like we're following the housing element. What they're looking for is, how are you planning ahead? So maybe something will happen sooner or later, but somewhere in your city, as Mitch said, you've got to identify parcels that have the potential and mixed use can be one way to do it. It doesn't mean it has to be that way. Parkside was not necessarily mixed use. But I think it's, it's also, we'd be remiss if we didn't have this conversation with the community because I do believe Crocker is going to change a lot. We have a major property owner there and some aging buildings with REACH codes where it's not becoming always financially feasible to keep remodeling something that's outdated and going to require significant investment of upgrades. And if you're looking at maximizing real estate, the footprint, there's a lot of ways to do that by redoing what sits there and thinking creatively. So I, I think it's a conversation without locking us into anything, that, that we could at least start thinking about this.
I think maybe I was misunderstood. I think that I always believed in a mixed-use vision for Bank of America. In fact, I, I could see it being all housing, but I always thought that that site would be, could be mixed use as well as the village. I'm talking about if we wanted to reevaluate all of the other housing that we had identified in Parkside and then making those buildings mixed use. That's what I have a problem with. And I, I think that the height on those would be ridiculous. And I think that adding like that many more additional, whether it's, you know, retail, restaurants or whatever, I don't think our town can support it, that's what I meant by that. And I don't think that if it was, you know, warehousing on the first floor, for example, and the, the, the height of that first floor plus then housing on top, those buildings would be really high. And I don't think that those two things are compatible with each other to have warehousing on the first floor.
I've never seen it.
Well, they've, they've done it.
Have they?
Prologis has done it in, in, I think, San Ramon. But that's more what I meant by that comment. So to me, the housing that we've identified in Parkside, it works. We've, we had a vision, we looked at it from an affordable housing perspective because it had to be to meet our requirements, we had to look at it from an affordable housing perspective. So yeah, I absolutely think like we should be thinking about housing, we should be planning for housing. I think this is one of the places in our city that makes the most sense for housing to go without relying on whatever's gonna happen at the Baylands. Absolutely, I'm 100% in agreement with that. I just don't think that I'm ready at this moment to also include relooking at all of Parkside and then maybe adding even more parcels from Crocker. We have to strike this fine balance here. Crocker is a golden goose for us. Crocker is the reason why the city has fared, one of the big reasons why the city has fared so well financially is a small town. If you look at how the city finances were before we had Crocker and if you look at it from how we've developed since we've had Crocker, Crocker has really saved us in many ways. The beauty about Crocker is that it's warehouses. And why that's important is that warehouses are disappearing all across the Bay Area. For what? Housing. That makes Crocker incredibly valuable because there's just not space. And especially centrally located, where we are in proximity to freeways, in proximity to SFO, we are in a prime location. Crocker is so important for us in terms of revenue. And yes, we have an obligation to meet housing and I understand that and nobody, I think, is, you know, more cognizant of that than me as somebody who needs affordable housing herself. But at the same time, in the long-term planning of our city, the more that we chew away at Crocker, you know, housing costs us money. We have to provide services, we have to provide staffing, housing, it, it's, it's our businesses, right, that, that make us money. And so you have that fine, you have that fine line. So eventually, you know, you, the more you encroach on Crocker, the more issues you're gonna have with people complaining about light, people complaining about noise, truck trips, all of those things. And so, you know, it's like, it's like people who build communities in wildlife areas and they encroach on the wildlife and they encroach on the wildlife and they encroach on the wildlife and then they're, they're angry that there's a coyote in their backyard. To me, the more we encroach on Crocker, the more we could destabilize the city's finances and the more we're going to exacerbate those problems that come with living next to an industrial area. And we need this industrial area. I, you know, I was hoping that we could even get some warehousing at, at the Baylands. With the way things are going, it's gonna be easy to lease. But we're getting all biotech, which as we're seeing right now, we already lost Bristol Myers Squibb, came in, came out. We also, we already lost Johnson and Johnson, came in, came out very fast.
San Gemel?
San Gemel? So we're not gonna get any more warehousing. In fact, we're gonna lose a lot of the warehouses we already have on industrial. So I think that that's something that we need to keep in the back of our mind.
Okay. So we're back to giving direction to staff on what we want them to look at.
Can we provide some comments? You know, we provided before the discussion, so yeah.
Sure, sure.
I, I just was reiterating where we're, where we're going with this discussion. Thank you. So, you know, you bring up some really good points, Madison. You know, the industrial park has been very good to us financially. But as you know, some businesses provide sales tax, some businesses don't provide any.
Business license.
We got a business license.
Business license.
Sure, no, I'm not, you know, and business license, it, it provides some revenue, but when you look at the amount of revenue compared to other sources, it's very small. So.
Like what?
Like sales tax, right? If you, for, you know, like a particular individual, a particular company. I mean, they, you know, a particular company that could have a large footprint, say they have a warehouse, the city. So the, so business license tax, what's the maximum that it goes up to for a, a, say, a company that would be in the industrial park? It's about $10,000 or am I, do I have that? Am I wrong on that?
If you're talking about with the capital portion, there's a contribution to business license tax?
Can you speak up a little, please?
If we're, if we're talking about business license with the capital improvement portion, it's about $50,000.
About $50,000?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and that, and that's for a company of how, that's how big?
10 million and over.
10 million and over?
Yeah.
Okay. In, in sales?
Correct.
Got it, got it. Okay. So I take that back, right? So it, it's not chump change?
We should put a hotel, that'll get us a house.
Right. But you know, there's also, if it was replaced with housing, then of course, then the property tax increases, right, because of Prop 13, right? And a lot of these warehouses have been around for a really long time. So the thing is, is that the area that, that we're talking about, entrance to town, do we want to see that improved? Do we want to have that property that we own be put into some, right? And so, okay, so I feel like we're all in agreement there, right? Looking at the other properties, maybe that should be for the Affordable Housing Subcommittee to maybe perhaps evaluate later on down the line if that is something that we want to do. But of course, from what John is saying, we're gonna have to, you know, evaluate those things, right? And so to, to, to ignore that doesn't fulfill our obligation.
No, he said this conversation, we could say we, we're talking about it now and we decided we don't wanna do it and that would be us.
Now, during our housing element discussions, right, one of the items that was before us was that, that HDC, is that the California?
HCD.
HCD, right. So they, they complained, you know, they're saying about, you know, you're, you're identifying these commercial sites and you don't have any control over them, right? And, and so we're trying to get credit and, you know, perhaps that's not such a good thing. You know, we, we, we don't think that that is so appropriate. However, we do know that, that we control the, the zoning. And if we as a city decide to make zoning changes to make it more financially feasible for these property owners, then you start to have a partnership and you encourage, if you, if, you know, maybe what, what we're offering right now doesn't entice them enough, right? And so that maybe having a reevaluation of the entire precise planned footprint then gives us an opportunity to look at it. We haven't looked at it in 10 years, right? We also know that besides buying the B of A site, we've also signed a long-term lease with property across the street. So these things, these are changes, right? And so there could be opportunities there too, if we want to explore them. And so that, you know, really just bringing this to us tonight is about, do we want to, to explore? It doesn't mean that we have to do these things. We don't have to make decisions tonight. It's basically, hey, do we want to, you know, open up a planning process and see what makes sense today? And that, and that's, that's really the ask in the end. How big of that footprint do, do you wanna have? That's what John's been asking us. Do you wanna do just the B of A site, B of A site in the village or do we wanna have a, a more expansive footprint? And so that, that's really up for us to make that decision.
Karen, you're sitting there, I, I, I need to get here from you before I.
Yeah, my head wants to blow off too. So I, I think we need to take off the blinders and we need to have an open discussion about vision for the future. Why hasn't Parkside been built, John?
Well, I mean, there's probably a number of reasons. One is the ownership, that is not their, not their bailiwick. They didn't buy it with that expectation of converting. You know, are the densities, are the heights, are those all palatable to the market? That would be, you know, open to some discussion, but I'm sure there's a variety of factors why Parkside has not come to fruition, for sure.
And John, why haven't we put some pressure on shopping center to make some changes that would be financially in their best interest and in ours too?
I think probably Mitch has probably been in better contact with the shop, the shopping center owners about their interests and needs, not something I've been dealing with them directly, so I defer to Mitch.
I'm not sure the city can put pressure necessarily, but is that something you want an answer to that question from Mitch?
Well, I, I just, it just begs that, for me, I think we should be very open-minded about the next 20 years. Not, it's not gonna be something that's gonna happen tomorrow. If we, we start discussing things like we know about the Baylands and Sierra Point, these things take years and years and years and years to get flushed out. It's not like us talking about, you know, maybe the school teacher's piece of property in addition to this, that and the other. These are open conversations that I could be dead and buried before anything happens about them, but I want, I wanna have discussions about what is possible? Why haven't we built Parkside? It was a great plan and if it's not working, why not? And what else do we need to look at to bring some ideas to the table that may or may not ever happen?
I mean, we had some good ideas with Parkside and I think that in one respect, in a different market, it would be viable. But it's not viable right now when they've got tenants that are paying top dollar for their warehouse space, which they need. And why go into two years of building something where costs are unknown? Money is tight, people can't finance things, venture capital has gone zip and, because you can get more interest out of the banks. So, you know, capital has dried up and so we can't be looking at market reasons why things haven't worked or forcing things to be able to work. You know, what I would like to recommend to staff on this particular request, and I'm certainly glad that I changed this from the last meeting.
Yeah.
Where they wanted to ta, tag it along with the budget because, you know, this is a really robust discussion we need to have. I think we do need to plan and figure out what we wanna do with Bank of America.
Yep.
I think that if conjunction, in conjunction with that, they look at what the possibilities might be if the village could be included or overlaid in a conjunctive product, process, that would be okay. And, you know, I'm pretty sure that, didn't the teachers' building just do some remodeling? Aren't they doing some repairs on that one building?
Arilam? Which one?
No, maybe not. I don't know, I saw something going on. And certainly, the, the City Hall adjacent property that we are in a long-term lease and are putting millions of dollars into. and are putting millions of dollars into.
Millions.
Millions. We want to overlay that and say, let's tear it down and build housing on it? I, I'm sorry, we're just, are investing in that to make it better. And not, and that's still more cost-effective than tearing it down and building a new sitting hall.
And it's not even, we don't even own that property.
And we don't own it.
We leased that.
And we're still putting millions into it. So, I would rather send a directive to staff to get a consultant to look at predominantly the Bank of America site with, if they want to say the vision for the, you know, or, or in conjunction with possibly the shopping center. I don't think we should be just making it bigger and bigger and bigger. We're gonna be looking at, at so much data that we can't do anything about that isn't in this scope. I think we, we need to keep it limited to that and see what they say and see what the public comes up with.
If I can make a suggestion, what, what if we, what if we had a workshop where we dusted off Parkside? And I'm not just talking about the Parkside that we approved for the housing element, but the entire footprint that we originally looked at, since we have two council members that weren't on the council at that time, I believe you weren't on the council at that time.
No, I was in planning.
Right, and that we look at the, the, the whole site as a whole, we do as a council workshop. You know, we don't have to hire a consultant then, and, and see if what came out of that workshop, I mean, out of that process, does that make sense for today? I hear what you're saying about like the economic times, Terry, and the thing is that things are constantly changing and you, you can't hang your hat on what's going on today. You put out a vision and then when the time is appropriate, then, then you implement. You, during the Great Recession, that's when we worked together to, to create the economic development plan. Because we knew that, you know, eventually the, the, the economy would turn around. And so we put forth that, that, that plan, and it has benefited us tremendously. And, you know, it was great when Mitch, you know, gave us that update, because it, it showed, yeah, by, by having forward thinking and not being so, you know, stuck in the present time, that we were able to hit the ground running and, and, and really benefit from that when the economy turned around.
And, and we relied on our, our diverse task base in Crocker that is warehousing and manufacturing.
Yeah, no, I think if we, you know, you do the vision exercise and you say, yeah, you know what, this, that doesn't make sense.
And then, and then five years from now, six years, it's eight years, you're gonna say, oh, no one's built it. Why hasn't no one built it? We should redo it all again, and I'll tell you why it's not being built. It's because Prologis is the number one commercial property owner in the world. They do commercial. That's like saying to me, as somebody who's a cat person, I'm gonna give you, you can get a free dog and I, and I'm gonna make, it's a really cute dog and I'll give you some free food. But I'm a cat person, I don't care that the dog is free. I'm not gonna go get the dog because I'm not a dog person, as an example.
All right, all right.
As an example, okay? So.
Prologis actually does some residential on the East Coast. I've looked up, they have partnered with developers and done residential.
But here, they have told us expressly, expressly, that they have no interest in doing that here. Then you have the teachers' union, who we've gone to so many times, right? They have a, they have a, a lot in a prime location. We've gone to them several times, asking them, can we, do, are you interested in selling? Are you interested, you know, if anything, we should put them in, in that plan too? And they've said, the way that we make our money, right, is we, as part of our portfolio, we buy and we hold. And so I think we have to look at who owns these properties that we want to include and evaluate whether it's even probable, like we have talked to them, they told us, we're not interested in that. So we could go and we can enhance it and we can enhance it and we can enhance it and we could blow all this consultant money. And it still might not get.
I don't think we're talking about just spending consultant money. I think that, I, I agree with Councilmember Lentz, bringing back Parkside. There's a lot of people in the community either weren't living here, they don't remember it. The context is important, the time that's passed and looking at, here's what we had in mind. How does that translate today? And is that what we want to carry forward? And that maybe the status quo of what we have now in a couple of years won't be the same and things will change. I think it's just opening our minds to a little different vision and, and trying to get in touch with residents and find out, they're very anxious to be involved in this process, and I think we need to involve them.
Well, I, I, again, we're looking at direction to give staff for tonight on where they want to go with this, this visioning.
I think the Economic Development Subcommittee should call a meeting with Prologis again and the teachers' union again. And if you tell them, hey, what could we do to, of zoning overlay on these properties to make you want to sell them or make you want to build housing? And then we go from there. Because, and, and if they come back and they say.
What about the affordable housing people instead of the?
If they say they don't want to, they're, they're not interested, yes, we could be all excited and the community could be all excited about wanting participate in a process, but yet again, we find ourselves in this place where we're all saying, oh, you know, while we were all, we all put all this time and effort into this and it's not getting built, so let's just redo it.
If I can just add to that, I was the participant in the Economic Development Subcommittee meeting with Prologis. We had a very robust discussion. It was surprisingly very positive. And when I asked them point blank, would you consider doing mixed use in some of your buildings? They said, we've done it before and we'll look at it.
So that's where we should start from, what?
Is that correct?
What they would like to see, because then again, we could be here reinventing the wheel, coming up with something else, and it could still not be the recipe that Prologis would need to make it happen.
Then let's have another meeting.
Have a meeting with Prologis and, because I don't want to, we, we can't make plans blind. If we want to actually, if we're talking about, we want to make a plan that could really happen, you have to bring the players to the table who have the power to make it happen and get the recipe from them about what they're looking for, and then we make the plan that fits their recipe.
If we want that plan.
Well, I think it's two-way though, because if I'm Prologis, I'm gonna say, what do you have in mind?
Exactly.
Parkside's what we had in mind, they didn't like, they don't like it. So can you tell me what part of this plan doesn't work for you? Because that'll give me a starting point.
Make it four times as big and tall, where they can make that much more money. That's what's gonna invite people to do things, is to make more money.
So maybe we bring back Parkside and, and have a, have a look at it, right?
With them?
If that's, if that's what we want to do.
To go up four more stories.
Right, I think it's, I'm putting it out there, right? We could go with, you know, what's being recommended here, or we as a council could give direction to staff and say, hey, can you bring back the Parkside plan so we, we can have a council workshop on it? So we have a better understanding of, and I'm talking about the entire Parkside, not just the one that we did for the housing on it, but one that also focused on the village and the B of A site and, and the retired teachers' union site, right? All those properties were part of the, the total footprint. Let's evaluate that and see then what direction we want to give, right? If you say, Terry, yeah, you know, I don't want this, the, the housing unit to be taller than what I've already given, right? Then at least we're giving direction, right? Like you're saying, Colin, we gotta, there's gotta be two ways. We gotta be able to say, okay, yeah, this is as far as we're gonna go, and then, then that was, that's what makes sense.
So, I, I think I'm hearing that some of the council wants to encompass all of the original Parkside, the Bank of America and the.
Maybe something new.
And that, and I think, I think I'm hearing there's three people that want to look at that whole thing, and I think there's two people who don't. Is that what I'm hearing? Because I don't want to go down that road.
No, I don't either. I'm not blind. If, if you sat down with Prologis and they gave you feedback on a plan that they could make work or they were even interested in.
And the teachers' union.
Or other sites through here, right? That would make sense? Okay, great, that's a real, that's a place where we can have an informed conversation with our community and we could say, this is what it's gonna take, it's gonna take five stories to make this happen. Would you, is the community open to that? And then we, and, and, and if the council also is open to that, we start that process. But it, we're gonna fall into the same trap of making a plan that the community loves, the community's invested in, we get all the feedback, it's three stories, it's all digestible, we all love it, and then it's not feasible for the players that make the decisions. And so if we want to create a plan that will yield different results, we have to ask the people who own the parcels, what it's gonna take to yield those results.
No one has, has a, you know, crystal ball, right? And so to speculate how it's all gonna turn out, you know, I think that, that doesn't, that doesn't put us on solid footing. What puts us on solid footing is dusting off something that we already have, evaluating, does it make sense today? Right, that's the first step. And then if, if we like elements of that plan, then we can go out and hire someone to help us. Right, you, you, look, you know that this site, the B of A site, is gonna be difficult. It's gonna be a difficult site, no question about it, right? And you talk about the heights and you, in order for it to pan out, it might have to be, if it was sand alone.
I have no problem talking about that.
Right, so, but by having a total vision for that site, now we can go to a Prologis or the retired teachers, counselors, you know, and say, look, this is what we do want to do. The council has agreed to this. Right now, we have something that, that helped us achieve our housing element requirements from the cycle before.
But where's the feedback from them? Why don't they like it?
You know, probably because we didn't offer enough, who knows, right? And you're, you're, right now, we're trying to, to figure out what some third party, you know, is making their decision, and that's not for us.
Excuse me for one second. John, are we putting the cart before the horse? Do what? If we were to create a new overlay system with Parkside and the new city hall and everybody, you know, maybe the whole Crocker Park? Are we just?
Just throw the quarry in there too.
Yeah, own the quarry, well, they've, they've got a plan already out there. You know, are, would it seem conducive to add a parcel that the owners have absolutely no intention of ever doing anything with? Or should we work out to them first if they have any intention of ever doing anything with it? I mean, where, when do we get to the level of futility of promising? I mean, I have people coming to me and the number one thing they want to happen at B of A is a wine bar.
Yeah.
And a community space, a wine bar and community space that we should just build and put in.
Or whatever restaurant that has the food, a diner, because they want that food.
I said, well, it, it, it's not feasible. A wine bar is not gonna make the rent. But anyway, where would you like us to start? Because obviously, we are having some difficulty.
Right, I'd like you to start. I'm honestly pretty agnostic as to where you go. I mean, I think if you wanted to look at Parkside, you raised really good points. The idea of Prologis today has their vision. When I met with DCT 10 years ago and they owned it, they had a very different vision. So what is your planning timeframe? The idea of, you know, you can have a vision out there and you want to play a long game and you're, you want a prospective buyer to understand what the community's vision is as opposed to somebody who's basing it on the current zoning and the current narrative? And so that's, you know, to speak to maybe Councilmember Lentz's idea that if you put something out there, it will eventually infiltrate into the market, into the buyers, into the, the community of people who are out there. But again, to speak to Councilwoman Davis, you're maybe sitting on a property for a long time without it, you know, there's no guarantee. Prologis could hold these properties for 40 years and never do a thing with them.
What a thing to put on our plate. We're over here, gonna have to look at BDI's hotel. Then we're looking at all of Sierra Point and Park and how we're gonna plan for sea level rise there and thinking about a whole master plan there. We're doing a public art master plan, we're planning for all the Baylands. And now we want to just, it's like we're redoing this whole town in the next year or two. I mean, that is such.
With no money and no funding.
Let's keep the focus on Parkside then, and not, not expand it.
Let's keep it on the B of A, I, I'd like, really still like to keep it on the B of A and the shopping center site, personally. But that's my, that's my vote.
Yes.
All right, I was trying not to say this, we are so far afield of your agendized, agendized item. You might want to do this in a separate hearing and, and notice it far more broadly, the topic far more broadly.
Can I make a suggestion? Let's find a middle ground. We have some flaming tempers going, we have a lot of different opinions. I think nobody here is able to foretell the future. When we look at the volatility of what's going on in Brisbane, to me, it's the same thing that's going on in Pacifica, San Carlos, Redwood City. All the peninsula cities are undergoing massive changes. And how do I know this? I, I've been talking to council members from other cities, so it's not easy. First, I think we need to acknowledge that. At the same time, I think we have to be realistic about what can we handle? May I suggest that the Economic Development Subcommittee have a meeting, start with parcel of Bank of America and the shopping center, knowing that Parkside is already there as a plan, it's already been approved, the zoning is there. And perhaps see if you can formulate a discussion to go back again with Prologis and say, we've had this vision, we really would like to do something different here. Is there any way you would want to work with us on this? Because other cities are doing this and this could be an opportunity for you as well, partnering with us on a vision that would be, it could be rewarding financially and then also it would be really good and productive for the city of Brisbane, who wants something done with this entrance to town. So could we ask the Economic Development Subcommittee to go back and perhaps consider doing that and bringing more information back to us again? That might be a starting point.
Madam mayor, I think the Economic Development Subcommittee has already exhausted a thought process on what could happen with the shopping center and Bank of America, correct me if I'm wrong. If we're going to give direction to staff, we own Bank of America. I think we should probably find out, is it possible to do anything? Given what we've already discussed about the size of that piece of property and we own it, people are getting a bit antsy that we haven't done anything, let's find out what we can do. I agree with Terry on that. And I think we should go back to Prologis. But I don't think another Economic Development Subcommittee meeting is gonna yield you what you're, you're thinking.
I think a consultant makes sense for Bank of America and.
Possibly.
And the village, I could see that. Specifically because when, when Cliff and I worked on this for affordable housing, we met with Mid Penn and they have a formula. They have a formula for how you get affordable housing, would get affordable housing on that site. And they told us very clearly how many stories it would need to be, units. And they told us very clearly how many stories it would need to be, units, if you did mixed use, how that affects the amount of units, what kind of mixed use things they typ, would typically put on the ground floor. So if we were talking about, if we wanted, you know, maybe to make this enticing for like a, you know, affordable housing developer to come in, there's a certain criteria that needs to happen. So I think having, you know, assistance on that helps. And I, and I think that, you know, all the points that have been made tonight about market conditions, I think that because the market conditions haven't been ripe to make Parkside happen, doesn't mean that the, the problem is the existing plan. It means that, it means that the conditions haven't been ready. The, the conditions haven't been such that Parkside has been desirable. Is there a way we might be able to make it more desirable? Sure. But that's informed information that we can get from the parties at the table. So you said that you had a meeting with Parkside, it went really, I mean, you had a meeting with Prologis, it went really, really well. There are teachers union, other people that are involved in this too. And they said, yes, we totally could do some type of mixed use. That's great. That's a starting point. It would be very helpful to know what, if Parkside is not it, what is it? That's a place that I would feel comfortable coming up with a plan for. If I knew what we needed to do to make it desirable. Because conceivably, we're building it on, we would be structuring the plan on what would be desirable right now. And that could move the needle right now.
You, you know, Madison, that, you know, even though we had that meeting with, um, with Mid Penn, that, that, that goalpost is already moved. Like what, what you can fit into a space that was feasible a few years ago is not feasible anymore. It just, it's, it's because of the high cost of, of housing. You know, I think, I think, you know, personally, I mean, I feel like if we give direction of what we're comfortable with and also getting, uh, input from folks that know, like Mid Penn or from good cities, that allows us to make realistic decisions. And now maybe, you know, the, you know, the, the, you know, the real data that comes in isn't something that we want.
Well, then maybe me and you can, maybe me and you then can meet with affordable housing developers and get, and have them look at Parkside and they said, they could say what it would take to make that enticing from an affordable housing perspective.
That was something I put out there, right? I mean, if, if we wanna keep the Village and the B of A site within economic development and then we look at other housing opportunities through the Affordable Housing Subcommittee, that's something that, that we could do as well. If that's cool with everybody on, on this council, because we've already kind of gone down this road with economic development.
Well, we're looking at direction to give staff today. Do we wanna give staff direction today? Or do we want to send it back to Subcommittee? In some form to find out, to figure out where we wanna go with this? I, I've.
I think Tom's giving us direction, right?
I think looking at Parkside is a separate issue for me.
I agree.
I agree.
And it's, it's, you know, when you give an overlay to some properties, you are, in theory, increasing the value of that property instantly with that overlay. It went from warehouse use to housing use. And then typically, that is a big, big financial incentive to people. Not necessarily to our procurrent business owners. Um, and, you know, when you give a financial incentive, that is how changes happen. Because it's financially feasible for them. Obviously, that wasn't enough to make that project happen. Now we have property we own and property we don't own. And we wanna vision what could go on those properties. And I'm willing to give staff direction to look at what could go on the property we own and the adjacent property. But I'm not hearing that that's what they want, that the rest of the council wants to bring forward to staff.
I, I would be happy to go with that because it's a step I think we can all agree on. And just keep in mind that at some point, I would like our vision to grow.
Could you please define that? Because I've heard several versions of that.
Bank of America, the shopping center.
I, in terms of giving that direction to John, who's about ready to pull his hair out.
Standalone and with, with, and maybe in conjunction to have the consultant look at a conjunction project with the possibility of including the, uh, shopping center.
Personally, I don't like approaching Bank of America on its own. I think that if that's the, the entrance to town, it, it needs to be looked at as the entrance to town and how that functions. And unless we have a vision for that shopping center, that may not happen. I think it's gonna have to come from us. So that's just my thoughts.
I think we need to see what a consultant could give with, with those ramifications.
I'm fine with that, but I, when we talked about the that and if we're giving direction and, and I heard about sending things back to Subcommittee, I would still like, perhaps then Affordable Housing Subcommittee to dust off Parkside and think about that. What could be done to move that forward, if anything? I don't have an answer to that, but.
I wouldn't even know where to start.
That, that's a conversation.
Have to, if you're looking at just Parkside, you'd have to start with what is financially feasible. I mean, and, and.
We would have to have conversations, like I said, with the people who own these properties and ask them, what is it gonna take? I'm happy to do that.
Or how much to make what.
Or we can meet with affordable housing.
Some people making it work or whether it's full-on, um, market rate housing.
Well, it, so the, the current housing out there, and John, tell me if I'm wrong, but it is market rate. But we use, I believe, form-based codes so that, because we did it like that, that we got the credit for affordability.
It's density, right?
Or density.
Based on density, that's what you get the credit for.
It's still market rate.
It's still market rate, but it, it was structured in a way, and I, I guess it was at that time, or maybe it's still that way. But at the time of that housing element, we got credit for affordability.
So, so do we, do, have we given staff a little bit of guidance?
So as I understand it, we can move ahead with consultant services for B of A and the Village with the understanding that there's maybe some desire to look at those as phased or, or separate or whatever. But they'll look at tho, that package and then the rest of Parkside or the question of Parkside housing and expansion will be referred to the housing or another Subcommittee and to deal with that separately, as what I'm understanding.
Does that work for everybody? We don't need to take a vote. We just need a head shake.
Uh, may, may I ask for one clarification with that? If you're having a consultant look at the Bank of America property and the shopping center, are you requesting that that be looked at for anything? Is it affordable housing? Is it mixed-use affordable housing? Is it?
I suspect there'll be a list of uses. This proposal, all I'm trying to do is create a scope of work.
Yeah.
And then when that scope of work is developed, I can share it with maybe, I don't know, which Subcommittee. It'll all come back to the council at some point to understand what you're going to, uh, proposal is gonna be for. And I would assume it would be, you know, uses, including but not limited to commercial, market rate or, uh, and/or, um, affordable housing, whatever. Unless there's something you wanna totally exclude out at this juncture. I not wanna ask you any more questions tonight. I think I'll leave you.
A gas station and mini mart?
We can, those are all prohibited as is, so.
Good, good. Nothing controversial there. Okay, thank you. And I think we can move on from, with that. Thank you.
I sure hope so. John has a headache.
Okay.
That was easy. All right.
That brings us to staff reports. City managers report on upcoming activities.
So my report tonight will be quick. Um, we will have a budget workshop on Thursday, May thirtieth, that we're going to propose to start at six P M. Uh, review all the departmental budgets and budget fiscal overview for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Um, we are proposing cancelling the July fourth meeting for, uh, obvious reasons. It's a holiday and, um, also the August first and August fifteenth meetings. And then coming back for a regular meeting on Labor Day, um, or just after Labor Day, Labor Day weekend on September fifth. Um, we want to make sure that you are aware of the few events that are happening in town. We already discussed earlier this evening, um, the Fire Authority, uh, North County Fire Authority's Wildfire Awareness Day, which will happen on May eleventh from ten A M. to one. Uh, the Lions will be doing a barbecue. Uh, earlier in the morning, Parks and Rec is hosting a Walk for Awareness event as May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Uh, they will meet at Corey Park at, uh, entrance at nine forty-five and the group will depart at about ten A M. for an hour walk and then come back to where the fire awareness, uh, uh, event is happening. Um, also on Saturday and Sunday, May eighteenth and nineteenth, Brisbane Dance Workshop will be presenting their spring performance Down the Rabbit Hole at Mission Blue Center. Um, we encourage people to purchase gala tickets for the Saturday evening, which includes performance wine and cheese, a delightful performance of Brisbane's young performing artists, followed by wine and des, desserts, all while supporting B W's, uh, scholarship program for the twenty-twenty-five year. And that's my report for tonight.
Thank you so much.
Excuse me one second. Could staff please, um, maybe send an email clarifying those changes on council meetings? That you enumerated?
Yeah, I thought we had, if, if we hadn't already done that, we will do that, yeah.
Thank you. Then can City Clerk, can we get an update on the recruitments?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, at the March seventh, twenty-twenty-four City Council meeting, I was directed to begin the recruitment process for vacancies in the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity and Accountability Committee and the Open Space and Ecology Committee and on the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District Board of Trustees. The recruitment period ended on April thirtieth and my office, and my office received the following applications. We received, um, for the IDEA Committee, there's three seats for two-year terms until twenty-twenty-six available. Uh, and we received applications from Carol Zaltowski, Kreta Highsmith, Tiffany Myers, Chaya Bella David and Don David. For Open Space and Ecology Committee, it's for one seat for two-year term until twenty-twenty-six. We received an application from Anthony Walker from San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District. There's one four-year term ending in twenty-twenty-eight. We received applications from Paul Biscall and Michael Goldman. We will need to schedule about two hours for interviews and council discussion. And additionally, we, we received a resignation letter from Patrick Tainter and his appointment was supposed to be until January twenty-twenty-five.
Which means we have another vacancy. And he was, uh, the complete streets.
That's right, complete streets.
So you're looking for a date when we can schedule a couple hours of interviews? And that would be live?
Do we, question, do we wanna just extend so that we can recruit for, also have time to recruit for Complete Streets, so that we can do all the interviews at once?
Would be a problem to extend it for another thirty days, maybe?
Um, no, it should be fine.
Is that something we'd wanna do?
Well, there's currently four, um, four members for the, um, for the Complete Street Safety Committee and they're supposed to have five or seven.
So yeah, we need to start recruiting ASAP. So, um, for, can you repeat for IDEA, how many spots and how many?
Three seats for two-year terms and we received five?
Good.
Okay.
So are we okay with extending it for a thirty-day period? So we can do a little bit more robust outreach, especially for the Complete Streets?
Yeah.
We'll do, we'll set the recruitment.
Great, thank you. Countywide assignments and subcommittees, um, who'd like to start?
Looks like we got Cunningham and Davis on top.
Okay.
Well, that's what we approved tonight.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, yeah, so this was all talking about the, um, Fourth Park, which we just approved and, um, moving on with the public art master planning process, which seems to be going very well.
Yeah, we have, um, the Turtle and the Helix at Fourth Park. We wanna get those painted by an artist, but they're a little beat up. So council tonight, through consent, approved a budget to repair those and get them ready and primed for painting. Um, so one of the focuses of the Public Art Committee is not just expanding our portfolio, but also taking care of what's already in existence, enhancing that. Um, and then we're gonna have a meeting on this, on the sixth of May with our consultants. Um, and then, right, yeah. And then they're also gonna be, they're gonna be in town, um, July twenty-fifth through twenty-seventh to do public outreach. So they're gonna be probably at a farmer's market, they're gonna be at a concerts in the park. That'll be a chance for them to really start engaging with the community about the vision of art for Brisbane. So, and then I could go, if anyone has any question, if no one has questions, we could just jump into the next thing. Simon, the next thing.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Cliff and I met about Charter City and election issues. We just mainly got a lot of information, um, about similar cities in population to Brisbane and what they did, which included Woodside, Ojai and Solvang. Those are cities who went to district elections and we asked for information from staff so we could understand case studies of how their public process went, what motivated them to make that change, so on and so forth. Um, we have asked staff to come back with information, if it's available, about what has happened in those cities since they went to districts. How has, how have the elections looked? How, how, um, has diversity been impacted? What have been the results of going to these district elections? Um, we also talked about, you know, kind of the need for a demographer. And so, um, Councilmember Lence and I will be meeting next week to interview a demographer so we can bring back more information for the full council about how, um, about, you know, the scope of work for a demographer, what they can do and just get more general information so that the council can determine whether it wants to budget for that service.
Yeah, we also looked at, uh, what other cities in San Mateo County do for
Yes.
Um, term limits.
Yes.
And also electing a mayor.
Yes.
Uh, it turned out that Solvang and Ojai both elect a mayor, even though they're small cities. So it's interesting to get that feedback too. And so, um, yeah, just still, you know, we had a very robust discussion. I know it was all over two hours and, but we, we asked a lot of questions and, and discussed a lot of scenarios because all these things are so intertwined. Uh, but the goal is hopefully, um, to make a recommendation to the full council, you know, provide options, I guess, you know, so that, um, you know, we can make the best decision moving forward.
Also, we did have conversations, we did have a conversation about what, what would make sense in terms of term limits. What would make sense in terms of electing a mayor and the term limits of an elected mayor and, um, the role of an elected mayor and all of that. But, um, we're gonna kind of try to bring all the recommendations forward at a separate time. Some of their little kinks that we need to iron out, which is based on what the demographer might say, um, which can impact especially like elected mayor and things. So stay tuned.
Great, thank you. Um, city clerk, do we have any written communications?
We received, um, correspondence from Pabalan Equity and City Leadership on, uh, 417, Salmon SB 9 ruling on 427, Dilworth 70 County Road Crocker Sierra Point zoning on 429.
Madam Mayor, I, I actually have a Subcommittee report. Well, it's county committee.
Oh, okay.
Um, Peninsula Clean Energy, a meeting from April 25th and, um, Brisbane was a recipient of PCE's Gov PV program that puts solar on government buildings with battery storage. Mission Blue was in the first phase of that, um, program. They've begun now PCE Phase Two. There's 19 agencies, agencies being peninsula cities in the PCE territory that are, uh, participating. Another new development is that, um, there's always been a goal to provide 100% renewable energy to customers 24/7 by 2025. And obviously there's been all these challenges in the energy market, delays in getting projects connected, getting equipment and parts. So that goal has been moved a couple times and it's now been moved to 2030. It's a little disappointing, but, um, still just kinda persevering. And also, um, just kind of, I think, it, a good time to remind just the general population that, that PCE doesn't own power plants. We sign contracts with power plants. And the most difficult time when you're talking 24/7 is after dark because that's the peak time, everybody goes home and that's when they want power. So there's been a, a real nationwide push in battery plus solar projects because you need that battery storage when it gets dark to provide the power. But it's, it's not just for solar. Um, in order to kind of fill that gap overnight, you need wind and geothermal and other types of renewables that can be used. But again, same problem, supply chain shortages, connection delays to the grid. The upside though is that the interest in, um, venture capital and there are international companies that are building all these huge, huge energy projects. And the interest in clean energy is actually still accelerating despite things not staying on the timeline that was anticipated. So we are moving forward and it is getting better. It's just taking a little longer. Thank you.
Thank you. That moves us to oral communications too. Is there any members of the public who'd like to speak on an item?
If you ever raise hand from Chris?
Okay, please go ahead, Chris.
Hi, thank you. I have a question. On the district election study that was done, are we only looking at three cities that adopted it rather than looking at a number of cities who considered it? And looking at all of those outcomes? Are we favoring in the direction of cities that adopted district elections is my question.
I, I think Christine, that it's, it's great that you're asking the question and when the Subcommittee meets and they'll report out again, they can discuss that. But because oral communications is not for-
Okay, got it.
For a question and answer period, we really can't go into that.
Chris, you could send me an email.
I don't know all the rules. Okay, thank you.
You can send us, you can send Cliff and I an email and we can get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I see no other hands raised. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 10:04 PM. Thank you.